I want to ahead and call to order the Lynchburg Planning Commission meeting for Wednesday, May 26, 2021, and our first order of businesses to approve the minutes from May 12, 2021. Has everybody had a chance to take a look at these?
Yes, I have.
Any changes? Any additions?
I'm moving.
Okay. Any second?
I'll second.
Okay, we're going to head and plan on voting for these, all in favor. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Great. All right, our next order of business would be new business, and we'll be hearing about the Parks and Recs Master Plan. This is something, you know, I'm interested in and I asked about. I think it's really a great thing for us to hear about, and I think it's an important economic development tool for our city as well. So who will be presenting this?
My name is Jennifer Jones. I'm the Director of Lynchburg Parks and Recreation. And I'm going to make the presentation.
Great, thank you for coming too.
Well, thanks for the invitation. Looking forward to spreading some of this knowledge.
Jenny, before you get started, Ms. Rogers, Nancy Marion is actually in my office right now. She didn't know it was virtual.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so I might need a little bit of technical assistance. I'm going, I have a PowerPoint ready, and I need somebody to guide me on how to share the screen.
Jenny, if you go to the top of the screen, next to where you can mute and unmute yourself, there's a arrow pointing up, and that, if you click that, should allow you to pick which screen to share.
Okay. Can you see that? No. Okay. Okay, let's see here.
There we go.
Yep, now we can see it.
Okay. So first of all, I just want to give a little bit of background here. The last time the Parks and Rec Department conducted a needs assessment and comprehensive master plan was over 24 years ago now. So we've been working off a lot of old plans, and as you all know, much has changed in the last 24 years as far as park and rec needs in the city of Lynchburg, and as well as trends that potentially could be looked into as well. Also, I wanted to mention that City Council approved this funding for the study in the 2021 CIP budget. We generated an RFP with a scope of work that went out in August of last year, and we had seven consultant firms' proposals that were submitted. And a team of city staff, including finance, community development, IT, and Parks and Rec, conducted an extensive screening process, scoring the proposals, and then finally scoring the finalist presentations. And in the end, Lowe's Design, out of Nashville, Tennessee, was awarded the contract, and they have been in business for 35 years, had completed over 900 park and rec projects, and specifically over 100 community-wide parks and recreation comprehensive master plans. Probably one of the things that really put them over the top and sealed the deal was that one of their, one of their subcontractors, Barry Dunn, employed, and their, their project manager from Barry Dunn, was going to be Barbara Heller, who is a huge superstar in the field of parks and recreation. And so we awarded that contract and worked on a new scope of work, you know, once we negotiated. The first scope of work, the original scope of work in the RFP, had to be reduced, simply because we didn't have the funds to complete everything that we were requesting. However, we do hope to have a Phase Two to fully finish this project. I do want to say that the Needs Assessment Comprehensive Park Master Plan is an all-encompassing look at Lynchburg Parks and Rec Department, from our program offerings, to our fees, to our park maintenance standards, to park operations, to the organizational structure, and finally to the build-out of our capital improvement plan over the next, what we think will probably be 15 years. And so this is the scope of work that we have agreed to, the kickoff meeting, research, information, assembly, interviews, and public input. We've already done that part of it. Staff and stakeholder interviews are done, focus, focus groups, stakeholder groups, that's done, public input meetings are done. Now we're down into this part, and I'm going to show you the project schedule here in a minute. Demand analysis, needs assessment survey, demographic research, site evaluation, park distribution mapping and gap analysis, and that's going to be looking very much at the 10-minute walk program that I'm going to talk about here in a minute. And connectivity analysis is a, is a major focus on our trail connections and connecting all of the parks around the city with the trail system. And then the second part of the scope of work, the final part, is park and facility land needs assessment, the capital improvement plan, we're saying 10 to 15 years out, program, service wellness analysis, a strategy for health equity and community health alignment, staffing analysis and strategies, comprehensive, or excuse me, budget and funding, preliminary recommendations, and that'll come, the, the actual final plan will be presented for feedback, and then once that feedback is considered, that, that plan will be tweaked and then presented back to City Council for adoption. And then finally, the consultants will work, will work with us on an implementation strategy for that plan, and that'll include, include a lot of funding, potential funding sources. So that's the scope of work, and you can see that it's fairly comprehensive, and it's a full look at our entire department. I want to say that this project started in February, actually, of 2021, with the dataset request from the consultants, and this is both from Lowe's Design and Barry Dunn. And so I'm going to just roll through a couple of these slides of what the datasets that were requested from Lowe's, but this does not include Barry Dunn. So this is just about 70% of what was requested, and I think it gives you a pretty good idea of the depth of analysis that is going into this needs assessment and comprehensive master plan. So I won't read it all to you, but you can see, you know, base maps, your own maps, indoor facilities, inventories of, of all parks, trails, that sort of thing, their location. I will say that IT, our IT Department, GIS Division, were a huge help and worked extensively on, on the, this mapping that was requested in a specific format from the consultants. You see the names of the parks, park problems, park planning, staff organization chart, these are some more of the, of the data request.
Excuse me, Jennifer?
Yes.
Like, on my screen, I only see your title page. Am I missing something?
Yes. Oh, my gosh, yes. Okay. Hold on a second here. I'm probably going to need some guidance on what the problem is. Hang on one second here. Let me hit escape.
My screen gives me a Take Control option, but I don't use Microsoft, so I'm not about to try.
Okay, I'm sorry. I thought you were seeing all these slides I was whipping through here. Okay. The scope of work, let's see. I wonder, do you have any ideas, Meg?
Um, when you hit Share Content, which, what did you select?
Well, let's go back and look. I'm sorry. Let's see here. So here, and then... Screen one, or PowerPoint presentation, those are my choices. Screen one, May 26, Planning Commission. There's about, there's six choices here. Two of them are the PowerPoint, so I'm not sure.
Maybe select the other PowerPoint. Maybe that's what's moving, moving forward.
What about screen one, and then?
Uh, now we can see, we can see that, I can see the PowerPoint, there you go.
Okay, now I'm going to switch the page. Can you see that? Can you see the change?
Yes.
All right.
Yep, that's good.
Okay, so I've, I've talked about, I've talked about these first six slides, but this is the scope of work that I was discussing about the kickoff meeting, the staff and stakeholder interviews, focus group meetings, public input, demand analysis, demographics, site evaluations, park distribution and mapping, and connectivity analysis, and those last two, we're going to take a look at the 10-minute walk as well as the trail system, and then the rest of the scope of work, and... Just giving you an idea of, of what we're going, what the deliverables are going to be from the consultants with this. So it's a very comprehensive overview of the entire department. So we truly are building the parks, trails, facilities, and programs of the future. And this has given an idea, when I was talking about the dataset request, we started fulfilling these requests back in February, and it took for staff an entire month to fulfill all of these requests, and you can see that there are numerous maps and things, and very specific guidelines as to how they needed to receive those maps, which were fulfilled by the, our IT department. Some more information, more data requests, dataset requests. And I was saying that this is only, this is just 70% of what we actually loaded into the shared Dropbox with the consultants. There was about 30% more than just this that went to the Barry Dunn consultants. And I, water resources helped us out on, with some of these, and it was really important because, especially the flood plans and, and the new study about what's going to happen when they remove the College Lake Dam, it's going to add two to three-foot water level downstream, which means several of our facilities will flood, including Blackwater Creek Athletic Area and the Dog Park. So we're making plans to move those amenities to another part of the city. And then we had to go back to the drawing board and redesign the swinging bridges, because, you know, we wanted to use the U.S. Forest Service design, which is 15-foot above the water level, and those are the only ones that survived the flash flood. And since we're building for the future, we want to make sure that all the other bridges that we replaced, the ones that have been washed out, are the same style, 15-foot above. And so it's kind of what has put us behind in restoring Creekside Trail. The bridges have got to be rebuilt first. We had the funding, but they had to be redesigned to allow for that two-to-three-foot increase in water level downstream. But it really plays into, the flood plain really plays into Parks and Rec, because a lot of our parks and trails are within that flood plain. Just so happens, the Blackwater Creek watershed is what I'm talking about here. It just so happens, that's the way the, the parks were built. We sustained a lot of damage in Peaksview Park as well, which they'll be looking at. All right, project schedule. We're in the community engagement phase of the needs assessment, and I'm going to talk about that, about that a little bit more. So we are, we are in this area right here, although they've started benchmarking and level of service analysis as well. So this is where we're at now. Looks, we'll be complete down here in November, when the entire plan is presented to City Council. So we're here now, and this, this was a lot of our effort, all the community engagement, really. 90% is park and rec effort for, for that to be achieved, like high response rate, that sort of thing. And then the rest of this really is the consultants putting the, the rest of this plan together in conjunction with us, but the majority of this project now is on the consultant's shoulders, because they have all the information to draw their recommendations from. Talk a little bit about our community engagement so far. I will say that these top six strategies for community engagement were very successful. So stakeholder meetings, the focus groups, the interviews with city leaders and key staff, and that included all the City Council. Consultant hosted pop-ups, they hosted four in their initial meeting. Lynchburg Parks and Rec hosted 19 on the trails and in our various facilities, parks, neighborhood centers, and then the project website. The public meeting and the randomly sampled survey, this jury's still out on that, but that, the public meeting was sparsely attended. It could be because it was virtual and during, you know, of course, the COVID shutdown, and it also competed with other meetings, like a City Council meeting, but that's when the consultants had set it up. And the randomly sampled survey, we were actually warned, but we really wanted this as part of our study, just to compare it to more of a, a random sample versus people who maybe go into the website and filling things out, that have a vested interest, that this is what we could generalize to the entire population would be that. That's the reason we went with it. Now, we were warned that random samples are very difficult these days, and statistically valid random sampling is really almost impossible, and it's very expensive, or very expensive, which we didn't have the funds for. So we went away from, we were steered away from the statistically valid and just doing the random sampling. We have not had a good response to these two things, but the top four things we have, and this just gives you a good idea about how we approach public input for the, for this needs assessment and master plan process. All right, then, real specifically, what we focused on with the stakeholder meetings and focus group interviews. This top one, the Community Wellness Hub at the Neighborhood Centers, that actually was the, the most well-attended. We had 25 different organizations that attended that particular stakeholder meeting. And then we had a focus group for all of our partner groups. We have over 30 partner groups, from youth sports to, to some of our art groups and some of the friends groups, friends of tennis, you know, friends of Lynchburg Parks and Rec, friends of different neighborhood centers, all invited to this, and it focused on, this just focused on a SWOT analysis of basically our current partnerships. Then accessibility and inclusion focus group, environmental sustainability stakeholder group, that was pretty well-attended. I'm going to talk about effectiveness here in just a minute. The maintenance overview and park and trail build-out stakeholder meeting was internal invite-only. Actually, every one of these were invite-only, so, and I'm going to talk about what, how our, how effective we were in this. But this was, this was the only one, number five, that was internal only, and it involved Parks and Rec, Public Works, community development, water resources. Okay, so, and then the last one, I thought was the most interesting. It was basically a brainstorming session. The 10-minute walk program, just for those of you that don't know, is a public, our Trust for Public Land and NRPA initiative, that's been sanctioned by Live Healthy Lynchburg and adopted by Lynchburg City Council and the Lynchburg Plan. It's a nature and social equity effort, and it's, the idea is to build a park within a 10-minute walk of every neighborhood, because research shows that citizens who live within a 10-minute walk of a local park are three times more likely to get the recommended daily allowance of physical exercise. So the two key components to good health are eating the right amount of nutritional food and physical activity. And Lynchburg, as you all know, via the Lynchburg Plan, has an ambitious effort to provide, to provide healthy opportunities and great quality of life for all Lynchburgers, all Lynchburgers. So this is a major step in the right direction, and trying to adopt this 10-minute walk and actually build parks within a 10-minute walk of every neighborhood. And I'll, I'll show you with maps here in a minute how we'll determine some of that. And then some of you may, may or may not know, there's been a James River Whitewater crack, uh, course feasibility study that's been conducted. Amherst County actually spearheaded this, but Lynchburg also helped to, to pay for this study, and it just looked at removing part of the Scots Mill Dam and creating a whitewater course between the Scots Mill Dam and Percival Island. And the price tag on that is, I think it's seven to eight million dollars. So there was a lot of talk about that. The Lynchburg Trail Loop, and basically, we have a lot of smaller plans that have been put together by park and trail designers over the years, and it connects. When you put them all together, they actually connect in a loop around Lynchburg and connect to all the parks as well. And we're asking the consultants to put together that whole connectivity trail loop for something that's going to be presented at the end of this process. And then finally, we're also looking at Blue Ways. We have one canoe kayak put in Hollins Mill, but we're looking to add more now that the water is going to increase two to three foot. We, we have some places that that actually could be done, especially along Ivy Creek. And so we're, we're going to be looking, there's been a Blue Way study, and we'll look at what it says, as well as what the consultants come back and say could possibly be done in a, in a Lynchburg city, not just, you know, not just regionally. Okay, so those were the stakeholder meetings and focus group interviews. And then we held our pop-ups. Like I said, Lynchburg Parks and Rec hosted 19 pop-ups over the month of April 2021. We engaged 531 citizens who placed 6,023 dots, and those dots represent votes for programs and facilities people would like to have built or offered. The April 14 pop-up at the Yoder Neighborhood Center had the most participation, with 90 people, and these were in two-hour increments. We would just go set up in parks and trails in different places, like Lynchburg Community Market Neighborhood Centers, and this happened to be one of the vaccine clinics where we captured 90 people and their input. So, but 95% of people approached, they did participate in a dot exercise. So everybody, pretty much everybody said yes. There were some people that were in a hurry, and some that just didn't want to, but, you know, that's, I thought that was pretty good. But this doesn't include the information from the consultants hosted pop-ups at the Lynchburg Community Market. They had two, one at Ed Page Entrance, and one at Dick's Sporting Goods, where they had a huge turnout. And then I want to talk about the website. Let's look at this just for a second. It has, I hope, I hope this doesn't keep me from getting back to where I'm at, but I do want to show you this, so I might need guidance when we get, when we get out of this. Okay. Can you hear me still?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
So this is the social pinpoint website that's been set up by the consultants. So this, this is their landing page, and you roll down, and just a little bit of information about the needs assessment, but it has four key components. Where do you want it, community survey, how would you invest? So it's a budget exercise about what you'd invest your dollars in, and then other comments. And where do you want it, I think, is the most interesting. So let's look at that. And, and then there's just a, just showing everybody where we're at in the process here, public input facilities, which best syncs up with the project schedule that I had shown. So where do you want it? We have a, just a ton of people giving feedback on this particular. Okay. Get started now. All right. And basically, you can go in here, and you can add an idea, suggestion, something I like, make a comment, greenway, and you drag it to an area, you can blow this map up too, and make your comments, and ideas, talk about open space, that sort of thing. And so you can see, hopefully, here, I guess I look at it on, I've looked at it on the consultant, so I can see everything broken down, but you can see, when a bunch of people comment about one thing, this just got so cluttered with ideas and suggestions and comments, this, when you see like 35, that means 35 people comment on, on something in this very specific area. So 35 people did, or talked about the greenway. Five people think there should be a new park in this area. Something I like was, somebody gave a thumbs up to something someone said here. People made comments, 10 people made comments about something located here. So just giving you an idea of what we've done. I'm going to tell you about the effectiveness of this website in just a minute. Let's see here. I'm a little bit afraid to go, okay. And then the community survey, I don't want to get into that, because it'll, yeah, I don't want to get caught up in it, and how you'd invest, but we couldn't believe in the other comments. It was almost like people didn't really want to do, take the survey, no, they just had something on their mind, but these comments, and the consultants have shown me a lot of them, are incredibly well-thought-out comments. These are people that, I mean, they've spent a lot of time to write their ideas and suggestions and, and give critiques about things. I mean, we're not doing this because we're perfect, we're doing this because we're trying to improve. Ideas, comments, just even, you know, including negative comments about our offerings and that sort of thing, but it's all going to be super helpful. So that's the social pinpoint website. I'm going to go off this and hope I can get back. Let's see here, where am I? Okay. Can you still hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. All right, okay. I'm sorry, I'm a little, little tentative here. I've never given a presentation ever on this kind of a, a website and shared my screen, so sorry if I kind of clunky as I do this. And this is just an overview of the community engagement thus far, so you can see the effectiveness of the kickoff week, the pop-ups, the website, that sort of thing. So the focus group stakeholder meetings, individual interviews, that was 90% attended. So those people who were invited, 90% actually attended. We thought that was fairly incredible. That was, we were so happy with that turnout. Now, we, we bugged people with a lot of reminders, but 90%, we felt was hugely, hugely successful for the stakeholder and focus group meetings, and there were a total of 140 people that participated, 48 people. Consultant pop-ups, we don't have a number on that yet. I know that we're over 250 that participated at Dick's. The public meeting, only 17. Some people might think that's great for a public meeting, but we, we did not consider that well-attended. I'm just being honest. And then the website, we've had 1,679. Now, that, that does not mean views, there's way, way more views of the website. 1,679 people logged in with their, with their email address and did something on the website. They filled out the survey, they did something, where do you want it, they, they wrote a comment, or they did the budget exercise. But unique users who actually logged in with their email address participated so far in the website. I don't know that a whole week's gone by since I've gotten this number from the consultant, so we're kind of hoping that goes up too. And then 534, like I said, participated in the pop-ups. 95% of people approached, did the dot exercise. The random survey is open until June 1. It's, we, we actually sent out an incentive postcard and incentivized people to fill out the, to fill out this random survey. Basically, it was a postcard that was sent to people's houses to go to a website and answer a Survey Monkey survey. And I don't know if it was the technique used here, or like the consultants say, the random surveys just aren't well-received anymore, but the numbers were low. We incentivized, we did pick up numbers when we incentivized with a gift basket, $500 worth of stuff in it, and so that did increase. We still don't know what that final number is. But this is what our estimate was last week of total participation. We have one last push of marketing and things that are going out, and we want this number to be 4,000. That's our goal. We know that that's ambitious, but we're hoping to increase that number to 4,000. And we have a lot of different ways that we're trying to do that. So that just gives an idea of the things that we're working during this, you know, the COVID shutdown, and the things that didn't work. And these were our marketing efforts. We actually first introduced this in our program guide, that is direct mail to every single household in the city of Lynchburg. single household in the city of Lynchburg, all of the needs assessment information. And we put up banners with the website information in key areas around the city, downtown, hanging near Lynchburg Community Market, out in their heritage, at the Langhorne Trestle, at Miller Park, and some other places. We had business cards made up with the website on it, and we passed those out at all the meetings we went to and on the trail, so that people, even if they did the dot exercise, could then go back to the website and tell us where they wanted something, because that was not covered in the dot exercise. And then we had the flyers made with the website on it, and those were placed in all the water bills, and we can see who used a QR code, but we don't know who actually went to the website from looking at that flyer in the water bill. So we don't know what the effectiveness of that is. We just know there was a huge spike when this went out, and we also did a Facebook post, a boost. And there was a huge spike in the people who went to the website and did something after that. Media coverage, WYID did several free radio spots with us, TV station, newspaper did articles. The Facebook boost was very effective. We think it's very effective, okay? So other people might think we spent too much on the boost, but we did have a small budget for marketing this, so. The random sample incentive postcards, we'll see, we'll see what happens there. Word of mouth, I think, you know, it's hard to gauge that. And partner group sharing in the project website, we asked Lynchburg City Schools to send this out, and about a day or two after we asked them, and they said yes, there was another spike on the website of people who went in to tell us where they wanted parks to be built specifically and taking the survey. And as far as marketing efforts, this just shows that that one, that one Facebook, we put a, it was a picture of a superhero, and it was something catchy, like you don't have to be a superhero to fill out this survey, but we boosted it, and we did get a hundred and ninety-nine clicks. And that actually was reflected in people who, also on the consultant's website, the social pinpoint website, it was reflected there as well, that there was a spike after we did this, the two days that we did this and two days after, so you can see how that Facebook boost increased. The numbers going to the website. And then just, just showing a little bit about the buttons on where do you want it, and I actually can't read that, but I think you knew what they were, these were, this is the greenway, and make a comment, and something you like, so those were the same things that I had already covered. Let's see here. I thought it was an interesting, I don't know, bell and whistle on this website, that you could actually add photos, so you could add an idea of something you wanted, you could upload a photo, and then write a description, and you can see here, somebody has uploaded a photo of the Batto Festival and written an entire description about the Batto Festival. And a lot of people took the time to do this sort of thing on the website. And that'll be reflected when, the consultants will share a lot of that when they come to city council and present their preliminary findings. And then the, let's see here, the preliminary results. This just shows that you can see where most of the interest was. If, when I look at this in a heat map that was shared with me by the consultants, the heat map focuses on this area, downtown and midtown. And when he initially showed this to me, we worked on trying to reach the people who are out here, because these are the actual park deserts. So like, this is Tyriana and Pleasant Valley, this is out near Heritage. Anyway, you can see, but, but once we focused on that, we started picking up, per the consultant's, you know, conversation with me, a lot more feedback in these areas. And I think the reaching out to our partner groups in Lynchburg City Schools and the stakeholder groups, the people who actually attended those stakeholder and focus group meetings, we reached back out to them and asked them to share it, and a lot of them did, and we got a big boost that way. Okay, and so this is a basically, this is a breakdown of the participation on the where do you want it section, because that was a section that was used the most of all four of those initial components that I showed you on the social pinpoint website. And you can see that ideas about the trails, Greenway Trail, same thing, and suggestions and ideas were actually used the most on the where do you want it portion of that website. And you can see some of the other things that, you know, people use, but predominantly trails and ideas and suggestions were used. And then you have the, some more preliminary results. This is a word cloud of the comments section of that website, as well as the comments on the where do you want it, and some of the words that were used. This is the, the final word cloud of all of that. And I, in our, I gave a breakdown of this in our quarterly staff meeting, and said I have a two-dollar bill, a fresh two-dollar bill for the person who raises their hand and tells me what was the most-used word in the needs assessment as far as community engagement websites so far. And we had somebody immediately say trail, and that was it. That, that's, I mean, people are super focused on the trails, and that's not a surprise. The consultants have moved into the benchmarking phase of this needs assessment and the level of service portion as well, and I had mentioned that back in the projects, when I was talking about the project schedule. This is a benchmark that I put together two years ago. This is just an example, I was taking a systems master planning class and did some of the research. And you can see, this is just going to give you an idea of what we can expect in a, probably more detailed fashion from the consultants. Parks and Rec full-time equivalents, Lynchburg compared to Roanoke and Suffolk. We selected Roanoke and Suffolk because they are who we, two of the departments that we compete against in our population category for VRPS awards. And there's a lot of other people in our population category, but we're the top three. We win the most awards, the three of us. So I was kind of interested in what they had going on and wanted to make some sort of similar population comparison. So you can see, Parks and Rec full-time equivalents, we have sixty-two, they have ninety-three, Suffolk has, Roanoke has ninety-three, Suffolk has seventy-two. And again, this was two years ago, so this, these have changed. It's population, the Parks and Rec budget, again, those have changed, but you can see what they're spending. And personnel, eighty percent of our budget is personnel, and you can see the difference with the others, so they've got a lot more as far as like materials and supplies and funds to implement programming. Square mileage, you can see that, per capita spending. So what they do here is take the, and it's very simple, just divide a population by the annual budgets, and you get your per capita spending, so you can see what they're spending in Roanoke and Suffolk versus Lynchburg and household income. I mean, one thing I wanted to say is, oh, wait a second here, level of service, okay, I'm sorry about that. There are two types of levels of service, there's population-based and access-based. Population-based service measures are provided by the National Park and Recreation Association. And this particular population-based level of service, again, I did this for a class I was taking, this is for outdoor park facilities, so this is, we have one for indoor as well. And you can see that the national median for every set, for basketball courts, you should have one for every seven thousand population. So Lynchburg's target, you know, back then, it was, back when I did this, was ten, and then we were, put together a list, and we did have ten outdoor courts, so zero, zero would be needed. So adult softball, you should have one per twelve thousand four hundred and sixty-three. And again, this is a, it's not a standard, it's just a guide, a guide you might say, and you can see that one is needed, youth softball, five are needed. Baseball, you should have one per sixty-five hundred residents. Target is ten for Lynchburg, we need four. Outdoor swimming pools, one for thirty, per thirty-four thousand. We, we should have three, we only have one, we need two more. Multi-purpose fields, it's not, this is not any surprise either that our target is ten, and we only have three, and seven are needed. So you can take, you can see where we're at with all of those various fields and how many are needed. That's the outdoor park facility. Level of service for, this is population-based again, indoor park facilities, fitness centers, one per forty thousand, we should have two in Lynchburg, and we don't, but then I also included agencies offering this facility, and you can see how many are offering this facility. Just to give you an idea, recreation centers, you should have one per basically twenty-five thousand, and so we need one point five, and on and on. Gyms, I mean, we're really short in gym space, we only have one dedicated indoor gym in the entire city that is ours. We rent the Armstrong Gym, and the gym that is ours is the Armory, but we're not allowed to use it until after five. So this has significantly, significantly reduced some of the programs that we really could be doing, like pickleball for seniors. But community centers, as far as that goes, we're calling those neighborhood centers kind of, this is a little muddled, but we have six neighborhood centers. We really only need two point five, I guess, according to them, so we have three more than what we really need. Senior centers, we need something more, performance amphitheaters, we need one, nature center. There's one planned, I mean, and basically, what they do is, okay, so this is what, this is just a guideline, kind of comparing all of these parks and recreation departments across the United States. Now, even though there's a, almost a recommendation that we add to gyms, our needs assessment feedback in the community engagement section may say we don't need it. We may hear that people, that fifty percent of everyone that answered this survey want pickleball courts, and that's what we ought to focus on. So these are, these are just in general, and they have to be weighed against what the community feels is needed and what they want, and that's all based on the feedback from the public input section. And then finally, level of service, which is access-based. Let's see here. And this helps us determine where the facility should be built. So once we know how many or what we're going to build, basketball courts, fields, and this sort of thing, this helps us determine where they actually should be built. This is a map from the Trust for Public Land, and I'm going to get into this in just a minute, but the red areas are park deserts. All of these red areas are park deserts. It's based on population, and if there's a park in a vicinity, and you'll see some of these places actually have a park in a vicinity, but they're saying it's not enough. And, and then down here, and I'm going to take you to a page that's going to actually tell us which one of these red, which one of the, which one needs it the most. One through five, it's going to tell us, one through five in Lynchburg, where should new facilities be built? And I'm going to go to that website, and this is the Trust for Public Land. If you Google Trust for Public Land, you're going to be looking for Park Score. There's a lot of other, I've taken us through a couple steps here by coming to Park Score immediately, but if you just Google Trust for Public Land, what you're looking for is Park Score and that tab, and it'll give you the Lynchburg results. So if I just type in Lynchburg, Virginia, search. It's going to tell me a lot about Lynchburg. And Lynchburg, Virginia, thirty-five percent of Lynchburg residents live within a ten-minute walk. This is all about the ten-minute walk and the initiative to put a park within a ten-minute walk for the reasons I already spoke about of every neighborhood. Can see, which is very different, this is very different than the national profile. Usually, low-income have less access. In Lynchburg, they have, the low-income actually have decent access, and I, I credit really the neighborhood center parks for that. And then it breaks it down by ethnicity. And three percent of the city's land is used for Parks and Rec, the national median is fifteen percent. And then we want to see Lynchburg's map, don't we? We do. Okay. Let's see here. All right, so this is Explore Command, okay, that's next. Choose what you want to see. All right, so these are the optimized points of where parks should be built. Let's do the Heat Island too, because the optimized points, I just want to make sure you see this, okay, park need. No. Yeah. Optimized points focuses on low-income and children. Okay, and the heat is just, Heat Island is population. And I'll, you can go back and take a look at that, I don't want to spend a lot of time, but it shows you. Children-based, right here, that'd be the first place we should build, put a park or something for children, low-income children in particular, right there. Just in general, just talking about population and park deserts, right here. And just to give you an idea, I think y'all know that, have seen this map probably a lot. This is Tyriana, Pleasant Valley, this is the landfill, this is kind of like White Rock right there. Out here, when I first started looking at this, four years ago, this wasn't even included. So there must have been, there must have been a lot of development and new housing going in in this lower Rivermont area, near the new bagel store, really. And, and then we knew this was a problem out here, we don't have hardly anything, and the Let me zoom in on this. Can I zoom in? The Dreaming Creek, Tomahawk Creek area. And that's actually, when I first looked at the comprehensive plan, those areas were actually mentioned for new parks as well, and that was probably six years ago when I first got here, I took a look at the comprehensive plan, and they talked about Dreaming Creek and Tomahawk Creek needing, you know, more park amenities, so we're all on the same page. But I won't, I won't belabor that, but you can see where those, you can see the, the heat map for population, and then the heat map that considers also low-income and children. And so we have an idea, we'll get, we'll get an idea of amenities that should be built based on NRPA and the feedback from the needs assessment, and this will help us with where it should be built, if we are going to put it in park deserts, and, and also help out with the ten-minute walk aspect of this as well. Okay, so get out of that. And the next steps. We're going to analyze, the consultants will analyze all the public input and present the initial community engagement findings to the city council on June twenty-second, twenty twenty-one. So at the end, at the end of June, that second council meeting, the consultants will be in town to present their initial findings. Then they'll be doing, analyzing, benchmarking, they're not going to present this at the council, as far as I know, and level of service, I don't think will be presented at that time, just our, just the feedback from the public input portion, community engagement portion. And then they're going to be really focusing on this ten-minute walk and how to address it. The trail plans will be a huge focus, the capital improvement plans, Barry Dunn will be doing this section, which is programming fee, staff fees and policies, et cetera, all those recommendations, and then all the best practices, recommendations that we requested, especially as it relates to neighborhood centers becoming community wellness hubs and what that might look like. as it relates to neighborhood centers becoming community wellness hubs and what that might look like. And and that's it, that's that's where we're at now on the needs assessment. I'm sorry about the technical difficulty. Kind of a dinosaur as far as technology goes, but I I hope you got the general gist of this needs assessment process and comprehensive master planning and and where we are and and I wonder if you have any questions.
I do not. I don't have a question. Rather, I really appreciate this presentation. I think it's fascinating. Talk with Tom Martin and other people about the importance of trails for our community and that they're a real magnet. I I think especially for business through and by younger people, tho- those are real magnet and real opportunity. So I'm really excited to see what comes up in November. And I will tell you honestly, I just posted some things onto the map while we were talking, sorry.
All right, I'm glad to hear it. It's great. Well, I I apologize for the technical difficulty. I I realized didn't realize I was rambling there for six slides and you all weren't seeing what I was talking about. So thanks for the heads up on that.
Jenny, I have a question, this is Nancy.
Hi Nancy.
What is this? Hi, what is the timeline? I mean, I missed the beginning of this thing, so you might have already said that, but but specifically for the Tyriana area, the old landfill. What's the timeline for getting that into park worthiness? What what has to happen? I mean, I know you've got to let all the methane gas out and all that stuff, so.
Well, actually, actually, that not that's only one part of it. And I I know Tom Martin probably wants to answer this. I was on the team for the Center for Urban Design for that as the park representative. And that was done as an entire neighborhood plan. And basically, there's about four components to that. To that plan. Only part of it is the landfill. There's three sections that are parks, which is across Concord Turnpike, which is in Tyriana. And turning some of the roadway into trails. And that entire plan is actually done, and I'm going to let Tom address when that's going to be presented.
Sure, so I I had forwarded the draft plan to several several weeks ago for your review. You know, from a planning standpoint, we we don't think the the plan is necessarily complete. At this point, and we kind of ran out of funding to complete the planning process, but we do feel like that a great a great deal was accomplished. And I believe it was right around half a million dollars of CPG funds were approved for park improvements. So I I think you'll be seeing improvements start before the plan actually gets adopted. The other thing is the planner that was working on that went out on maternity leave. But right now, we're hoping to kind of garner public feedback. You know, at least through the next month or so.
Hey, Tom, hey, Tom.
Yeah.
Okay, she's not you're you're answering where we're at in the Jefferson Park Master Plan. She's asking about the Tyriana Pleasant Valley Master Plan.
Oh, I'm sorry. Pleasant Valley, Tyriana, that one should be wrapping up within the next month. Obviously, what has slowed down a lot of our planning processes is the COVID and not being able to really engage people very well. So Rachel Fesaisen is actually working on that. We should have the draft that's, you know, we've done a staff review on it. So that should be going to the planning commission, I'd say, within the next month of the month of the
Thanks.
And that plan has four different park components to it. The landfill is only one of those components. So there's three other components that could be worked on while they deal with the landfill portion. Okay, so there's a lot of that actually could be planned and and built if we had the funds.
Thanks.
So I have another question. You know, when it comes to I I having followed that Highline development in New York. You know, when it comes to projects like that and and opportunities to build out a trail system. The funding, is that something that can partially be done by grants? Is there i- is this something that we have to rely on city funding solely to make happen?
No, actually, we've applied for a lot of grants and received them. The Langhorn Trestle Project was eighty percent VDOT and federal highway highway funds. We've received numerous DCR grants. So there's lots of grants that we've applied for. You know, and we do use CIP because there's a lot of competition for just a little bit of funding for trails. We're hopeful that that might change with some of these infrastructure bills that look like they're on the horizon. We hope that'll change, and we have some pretty good grant writers in our department. So we're looking at we're we actually are planning that out and we have a list of all the potential all the potential funding sources that are all the grants that are available, I should say. It was in the next couple of months, and we take a look at that on a regular basis. And kind of determine what's our priorities and and do we think we have a decent chance based on the criteria? And if we do, then we apply. And and we we're we we are probably batting about four hundred on our application for grants, I would say.
Do do you all work with a lot of the the Central Virginia Planning District at all on some of that?
I they write letters of support for me and I write letters of support for them. And, you know, sometimes we work together way back before the flash flood. And that ended up Creekside Trail ended up being our focus, the restoration of that. We had several localities pulled together to talk about a trail from Bedford through Poplar Forest and and all of their county administrators had agreed to this. Connecting to the trail in Lynchburg, all the way through Lynchburg, taking it across the John Lynch Bridge via the Downtown Twenty Forty Master Plan. Into Amherst County, from Amherst County to Nelson, all the way to the Croze Bridge. And we had all of those localities interested in pursuing this. And then and we were we were actually lead on that. And then the flash flood happened and we really had to focus all of our efforts on getting the funding to restore Creekside Trail, specifically the bridges and reroute the trail system. I mean, that that became our total priority and still is.
Great, thank you. Are there any other questions?
The only other thing I'd like to do is Bob, I'd like to just take you back on Tom's comment. I I'm just overwhelmed by the scope of this plan, but 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 I'm secondary, or more importantly, maybe is a better way to say it. Just all the stuff that you guys do. I'm thrilled with the I'm thrilled with the Blackwater Creek Trail, I use it all the time, all those other trails. I I felt like I was doing pretty good, but I feel like that's not even a a facet of it of a total of a total piece of work. So I just want to make sure we said thank you for that and thank you for sharing what you guys are getting ready to do. And no, I will not be available to help you out on any of your on any of your committees or any of the work on that. Looks like you guys are going to fall in all kinds of sixteen-hour days to make the November timing. But 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 more seriously, thank you so much for all you do, and thank you for your support of what's a very important resource in Lynchburg.
I thank you, and I'll pass that on to our staff as well.
Well, if there are no other comments, we can let you go and finish up our meeting. Does anybody else have anything they want to weigh in on?
No, I do not.
Well, no, just just really good stuff. Appreciate appreciate all the work.
Definitely.
Thank y'all for the opportunity and I'm I'm going to sign off now, okay?
Thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you, have a great day.
Bye-bye.
Bye.
Okay, well, now we're off to other business, which is nothing, it seems to be. Other than finding out when our next meeting is.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Kelly Hitchcock was going to talk to you on more of a regional level.
Oh, okay, I didn't even see that on there. I'm sorry. Well, that'll be great, let's hear that.
All right, can I, Tom, can I go ahead?
Which Tom, it's okay with me.
Oh, yeah, okay. Well, hi, I'm Kelly Hitchcock, I'm the Planning and Development Director Director of the Central Virginia Planning District Commission. So I really noted your question, Mr. Rogers, and I'll kind of follow up with that. Because again, as Jenny said, we we write support letters for each other, but there's a lot more symbiotic activity that that will we work with with the city and then regionally and multiple departments. And ultimately, with the goal of kind of what you touched on is maximizing our ability. Both Amherst, the city and the region's ability, you know, more arrows in our quiver to go after some some funding. And it not always be VDOT for trails because it's as Jenny said, it's incredibly competitive, so we want to try to see how we can sort of weave a tapestry and kind of cross-pollinate programs. So I'm just going to quickly go over a a couple of things. Our agency will be updating the Regional Greenways and Blueways Plan. We developed the Regional Greenways and Blueways Plan. That was last updated in twenty twelve. And it really has served as a foundation by which folks reference for for grant funding, whether that's DCR or whether it's VDOT, because they all want to see these regional funds. The Virginia Outdoors Plan, which is updated every five years. The twenty eighteen Virginia Outdoors Plan, which is the state's planning document and really informs Virginia land conservation funding, DCR recreational trail funding, which the city has been successful in accessing those funds. As Jenny well pointed out. And so that Regional Greens and Blueways Plan will be updated over a two-year. It'll start in our next fiscal year, which begins July one. And really, in this it's anticipated to be a two-year project because we again, we're not bringing in consultant at staff time. With the first year really being, you know, setting the foundation of what we know we have and what are the changes that have taken place. From, you know, marking down where there are parks that there didn't used to be from twenty twelve to now. In earnest, there's not as much of that change in the city because, again, y'all y'all have a really great grasp through your own departments on where your trails are and what you're doing. And then obviously, you know, we will hear directly from what you learn and what the city develops from this master planning process. Where you see envisioned trails, but but we'll be looking at those things that kind of affect the rural areas a little bit more in earnest. Again, Dalton's Landing is an example. We helped the town of Alta Vista and Campbell County put in a new access point on the Stanton River, which was identified in the regional plan again, so it opened up seven miles on the Stanton River. So that's the kind of thing, so that's a regional planning initiative. Again, we'll update that and the timing is really good for the region. The city and all the localities, because the Virginia Outdoors Plan, their next update is going to be twenty twenty-three. So from the standpoint, the city, you know, you'll be armed with what the priorities come out for where you want to make some improvements and changes and advancements within your parks and your trails. We'll be looking at those the regional initiative and we'll we'll, as a region, be armed to tell the state what we want to see moving forward. And again, kind of give you that that arrow in the quiver to go after those dollars. Then the next thing I want to talk about is is a current initiative that that again is a is a marriage or or hopefully, you know, a symbiotic activity that is taking place. We are developing the Middle James River Vision Plan. We have the Regional Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy. Out of that regional Economic Development Initiative. Eleven initiatives were developed to, you know, enhance quality of life and and economic vitality of our region. And one of the initiatives was it came out was advance the regional riverfront vision that seeks to unlock the region's river fronts. Better connecting and integrating local communities. Well, and Jenny alluded to it, Amherst County kind of took the bit between their teeth. And was looking at kind of a white a whitewater initiative. But what we as the PDC thought would be a good thing to do was for them to apply for technical assistance from the National Park Service Rivers, Trails and Conservation Assistance Program. And Amherst County reached out and created a coalition that includes Lynchburg City. It's represented by Rachel Friesheisen. I always butcher that name and I'm so sorry, Rachel, for that. The James River Association, Amherst County, the the PDC and the National Park Service. And that technical assistance, which is guaranteed for one year, but for a potential to advance to two years, depending on how successful we are in that forward. That was awarded to Amherst County in October of twenty. As you can imagine, we were doing some things kind of quietly because of COVID. We did have some focus group meetings that included Lynchburg City. Your your staff from your Water Resources Department. From your Public Works Department, from your Planning Department, from Parks and Recreation. And so so Jenny and her folks and Aaron Hawkins and many of the city's staff participated in our focus groups and we participated in your focus groups. And that initiative is underway and we are just launching, as in we just launched on Monday. Our Middle James Vision Plan website and a survey. And again, it's focused on the river, but not just in the river, the trails around the river. So the question is, we're asking people is how do you want to experience and use this natural resource? That is a a unifier between Amherst County and the city of Lynchburg. It's a boundary on a map, but it's a unifier for those things and how we experience it. And so obviously, that's a pretty natural fit to what's the Jenny's talked about with her parks plan. And if I I can share my screen, I believe here. Let me do that really quickly. You can see the screen?
Yes.
Yes. So that is the website. Again, we've launched that and we'll be, you know, we're just kicking off, we launched yesterday. And it does include a survey, I'm going to quickly let you do this. It's very similar to what you saw in Jenny, they use kind of a similar format. We use MetroQuest. We have to thank VDOT for that, for allowing us through our in our TPO. And so I'm just going to quickly just give you an example, it's this interactive survey. Again, we're saying, please help us shape this James River Vision. And, you know, you 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 click this and then you can identify priorities. It gives you the instructions there and we ask people to kind of talk about what matters most to them. And they can click here and you can see how we're defining what cultural events are. And so what they do is, so I'm going to give it, just do it here. You pull up those four things that matter most to you. And then and you can add comments, so people can add comments who are like, hey, this is kind of something else that matters to me. Then you come to a strategy ranking. And what's great about this is it's only going to ask about those things that I just prioritized. So I could change my mind and go, oh, wait a second, I didn't mean cultural activities, I want family-friendly play spaces. Whoops, I'd have to take down, I got to take that and change that. And then we we lay out some strategies. Say, well, you know, tell us if these are some good ideas that would help you advance what you think your priority is. And, you know, and we're going to send you the link because we know y'all are all going to participate in the survey. And then, you know, this is just your standard survey. Tell us how you use these resources now and kind of consider pre-COVID. And then we give information on how to stay involved. Because again, we're going to be doing pop-ups and those sort of things as well through the through this process. I'm going to come back to you guys. So so that's taking place. Again, we've already done five focus groups. They were small groups, but we did a we focused on local government. And again, that was sort of, again, in a safe space. not where the, you know, where the public wasn't always there, but a very safe space for staff to kind of talk about some of those things that we're doing. That included your Water Resources Department, CSO activities, Chesapeake Bay watershed implementation activities, all of those type of things. We talked about, we had a trail group. We had a river user group. And we were fortunate to have Kim Payne participated in that, and Joe Seifert, and a number of people from the Batto. We had an environmental water quality focus group meeting. And then economic developers. Again, what does this resource mean as far as, again, those quality of life elements that you all have alluded to? So again, this is actively taking place. And we will look to have the Middle James Vision Plan that will include a series of action initiatives to be able to increase the, again, the experience around the river. And that doesn't mean just in the river. That's about trails, and that's about maybe, you know, the same thing that Jenny talked about, family, family places, the way you can, those that just want to sit and look at birds, and what does that look like? And obviously, there's that natural marriage between what the city is hearing through their process. There's going to be that overlap and compare notes and ultimately come together. But again, another element of this is, and this kind of gets to your earlier comment, Mr. Rogers, as far as funding. You know, there's the hazard mitigation plan that also looks at, again, the river floods. And what are some of the initiatives that can be done to help kind of protect from that flooding? And how can the trails and open spaces kind of serve to provide recharge and safety places for that water? So that's moving forward. And then lastly, I want to talk about Amherst's initiative, on what they're doing on their side to bring what was articulated in the Regional Greenways and Blueways Plan back in 2012, which is to create an additional link besides what you already have on the James River Heritage Trail that, as you know, goes over to Amherst County and goes to the Fertilizer Road where the parking is. The vision has been, how can we really make it that people can get over to River Edge Park? For those that have been over there, you know that it's an amazing view because it's kind of a little bit, in a way, you can actually see Lynchburg in all its beauty on the other side of the river, a little bit better sometimes than you can see down at the bottom on the Lynchburg side. And so Amherst County is actively and proactively looking to advance that river connection and that trail connection. They have put in applications. They put in two applications in 2021 so far. One to the Virginia Land Conservation Foundation. They put another to the VOF Foundation. And they will be putting in a transportation alternative application to VDOT, so using the very competitive transportation dollars for the trail extension, again, to be able to kick left from where you go across currently. And so that's just really an overview of some of the initiatives that we are doing regionally that we hope, or not hope, we know are a partnership and just strengthens the efforts that all of your wonderful departments and wonderful staff are doing. And I'll leave it at that and answer any questions if there are any. And again, we'll send the link to Tom, and I'm sure Rachel will, so y'all can fill out the survey.
Great, thank you for that. I do have a question. I was curious about, you know, having spent a lot of time on the trails before they were even trails. I think when I first got out on that Percival's aisle, it was still the railroads. And, you know, I've been all the way over to Campbell County on that trail. And I was wondering, I heard at one time there was talk of Amherst being able to extend the trail over to the, I think it's called the Six Mile Bridge, but then nothing happened. Is there still a move for that?
I, in the long term of a vision, yes. But a priority is to kick left because ultimately, what you find, what statistically is found is that trails that create loops or trails that create kind of quick experiences get higher use, not necessarily from, well, they get higher use, full stop, period. But they also have a greater calling card because you can do initiatives. So yes, you could go to Six Mile Bridge, which is what we're talking about, and to go out. But it is still a very out and back. And so the, in earnest, the priority is, in the near term, what we're defining as one to five years, is to make that connection so you kick left. And then you think about it, you can go, you know, you go from the trail in on the city side, and then what if you can, you can keep on going down Percival's, and you can cross, and then you can go to the left, and then you can go over to River Edge Park. You can sit over there, you can look over, then you can come back, or you can, you know, you can get around. So I'm not saying that it's not still a priority. I mean, that it's not a vision and it's not something that's included. I'm sure that will be in the regional plan. But the real effort is to make that connection to River Edge Park.
Thank you.
But absolutely, anything to extend trails, extend miles, extend the experiences, yes.
Yeah, I was actually, I was thinking more on the connectivity side. You know, there's a fair number of employees that work just past that bridge. And, you know, I think that, you know, there's also a big piece of land that's over there that's not being used right now. So I was thinking of it more as a way eventually for people to connect via bike or however they want to get along on the trail. I don't know if anybody wants to run that far, but I think of it in that perspective, too.
Yeah, so you're, with Six Mile Bridge, there is definitely the vision is, I'm sure you guys are aware, in the redevelopment vision of the Training School Center and through that process and what that'll look like. And the vision of making sure that, again, there's a trail there so that, yes, that as that gets developed and whatever that looks like in the future, that absolutely, that opportunity to create those bicycle and that commuting link is, which actually speaks the reason of going left because there's Old Town Madison Heights, which is a, it's a pretty, you know, it's a urban-like little community right there. So again, part of it is what you actually touched on, which again, is creating those opportunities for bicycle commuting.
Well, almost in a situation, you know, like that, I don't know. Has there been any, this is a throwaway idea, but has there been anything like with a parking area on the other side that you could then ride in from there so you didn't have to deal with, you know, with whatever the traffic was? You know, something being better than nothing. And I don't know how much of a bike commute kind of situation it would be, but to have another, you know, to broaden an access area or to expand an access area might be, might be an idea. I really liked your idea about gaining use. And I really liked your idea about, you could say it this way, what I took away was building interest in a given trail. And so I think of the park and ride situation as a way to, what you call it, increasing the calling card for a given trail or given access.
So that's, I appreciate the opportunity to come and present this for you. And we'll look forward to it again over the next year.
Thank you very much, Kelly. Really enjoyed hearing that.
Thank you. Take care.
All right, is there something else that, I'm just going to blindside me?
No more surprises, that was it.
Okay. So do we have a meeting coming up?
Yes, we should have two items for the night.
Great. All right, well, hopefully we don't have to do it this way.
No, it'll be in person.
All right, well, is anybody interested in closing the meeting?
I make motion we close the meeting.
A second.
All right, well, I think our meeting is closed then. So I hope you'll have a great afternoon. And thanks, Tom, for making that happen. Really appreciate that. I think, like I said, I don't think we can underscore how important it is to the city, especially as some of our recruiting tools that we used to have for business might not be quite as attractive. That is something that we have, and I think we have in spades. So hopefully, we can help to develop that.
Yeah, that was, that was very beneficial. Thanks for setting that up.
All right, well, I'm going to head out.
All right, have a good evening.
Good night. Thank you.
Thanks, all.
Bye.